Okay, we're up guys, okay. Okay, we'll reconvene to public session and welcome to the next to last meeting in this board. Okay, can we all hear, okay, we have reconvened like session then welcome to the next to last meeting in this boardroom. And then January will be over in the paper, so attendance, everybody is here. Okay, public comments announcement. Due into board policy number twenty-three five oh, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Or thirty minutes per topic, all speakers would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda. Must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary. Prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called, all speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting. Must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary. Prior to the point in the meeting, open forum on non agenda. Public comment cards are available at the information table, the rear of boardroom from the recording secretary or online. We ask that all speakers come to the podium to address the board, thank you. Okay, this game, if you lead us into.
Right hand over your heart, ready again, I pledge allegiance to the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, can we have item nine point one, agenda approval. Motion, so, so our second, so any discussion, your advice, approval, all in favor, I. Item ten point one, recognition.
Good evening, Chair Buffalo, Board of Trustees and Public, we have members of our Bond Oversight Committee, Measure A V. Systems Oversight Committee go serve for three terms and it's it's quite a service to the community to come in and and volunteer their time. And they guard the public's trust and they help with us at at college to make sure that we're following through with the intent of the voters. Making sure that we really are are keeping faith with what the college has asked and what the voters have approved. And so tonight, we have certificates we want to recognize, if you're in the audience, we want to recognize Anthony Bruno, Dr. Stacy Bryant. So, please come forward.
We have item eleven point one, open forum, a non agenda items, and we have believe one card Cindy Hendricks.
Don't worry, it won't be three minutes, good evening, President, let members of the board, Cindy Hendricks, ABC, LT.
Oh. All right, Mike.
Okay, well, I. I can talk loud, yeah, I'll just go ahead, so. Cindy Hendricks, ABCFT, I'm here to talk about negotiations. I just want to say I'm very disappointed that we have not gotten any feedback nor counter offer regarding the MOU for adjunct healthcare. Why is this, back in October, the November, the negotiating team was told that the district council had to meet with the admin to discuss the MOU. That was on October eighteen, and we still have heard nothing, what is the holdup? This MOU costs the district nothing, and it helps our adjunct faculty tremendously. Yes, I know that the chancellor's office still doesn't have the forms and processes and completely figured out, but the money is there. Why should faculty be held hostage to the processes beyond their control? Districts will get reimbursed, and there's more than enough money in the reserve to cover any costs until the reimbursements arrive. Additionally, the Federation has submitted submitted other articles four, five, and seven, for which we have yet to receive a counter offer or an agreement. On October thirteenth, we had a negotiation session, which was canceled. The district said we would exchange proposals by email. Our articles were sent out, and there was a little bit of discussion during our October eighteenth meeting, but we have yet to get a reply. I've known how busy both sides are, the Federation really needs some feedback in order to move forward. I hope that next semester negotiations will proceed at a fast pace, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, item twelve point one, constitutional essay contest winners.
Well, everybody, it's just, it's great to be back here, Steve, congratulations, Barbara, congratulations, Mike, congratulations on the reelection. I think that's some competition out there, so anyways, everybody, welcome back. For for ten years now, we've been doing this constitutional essay. Let me just highlight a little bit about these students, real quick, Patty, as I know we have the clock on this one, but just want to let you know. Last year, if you recall, basically Store High School swept, I don't know if anybody remembers this, but one through five was not a. College eligible student that actually won with all the high school students. This year, we got a hundred and sixty-six students submit applications, or essays, and I just kind of want to highlight on this, there was. Five of these students, and all five of these students, they were, their scores were. Grace Marie Brune, everybody, it comes from Brune family, which are legendary, the brothers are made, former students here, but she wrote. Our lady of, our lady C, Ontario, Canada, Bert Gray and Kristen Stevens, she is a piano teacher, she. Uh, everyone is a second year, you see, wrote an article on the fourteenth amendment, she covered areas of due process privileges. To be vastly important cases involving everything, right, use of consciousness. I mean, it reads two to three books a week, and I'm not joking about that. Come on up. And the right to stop protest as well as free press. She'll be graduating this year, she hopes to get into either Pepperdine or U S D L A, and her hobbies include reading. And she's a big, she loves to be involved, she's a Misses Hannah Duffy. At Pressy Auto, everyone is a third year student at ABC, and he works full time. And he wrote his paper called A Man in His Castle, Get a Warrant, his his essay covered the Fourth Amendment. He talked about probable cause, he used multiple cases, he talked about due process, he even quoted Jay Z's ninety-nine problems and the dead Kennedy's California Uber. And and it's one of the quotes that I like to take from his essay, the Constitution of the United States has influenced the budding democracies worldwide. One's person's profit explicitly protected remains the most inspiring language in the document, is the policy major, he is the first in this town to. And all the other faculty that are involved in this, I'm really grateful for Dr. Jill Zimmerman and ASO. And it was really enlightening to introduce. About this constitutional essay, and I really appreciate you the praise.
Please use your microphone, they all turned off, just so you know.
Okay, great job, okay, we're going to move along to item twelve point two, Veteran Center Update.
Just talk really loud, Ashley.
Okay, you can hear me, okay.
Well, people.
Okay, got it, good evening, members of the board, President Zellot, all the students and the community. My name is Ashley Hawkins, I am the project supervisor for first and second year experience and Veterans Resource Center here at ABC. Somehow I've been here eight years and I've never presented to the board, so, hi, um, the, do I. Um, the mission of the Veterans Resource Center is to provide support and community through education. To assist military service members, veterans, and their dependents in finding success in the civilian sector. We make sure that we don't discriminate what that success looked like for any of our veterans or military affiliated students. For some, it's certi- certificates, for some, it's degrees, for some, it's just community and a safe space to transition, we try to make sure we meet all of those needs. Um, we offer, the services that we offer are, we do certify benefits with the VA, so veterans who finish their service and they have. Education benefits, we do certify those benefits with the VA so that they're able to receive the money that they have available. I want to make sure that I mention, a lot of our veterans opt not to use their benefits at this level because the community college is more affordable, so they save their benefits for when they. Transfer, so you'll notice when we get into the data on these slides, there's two different numbers, there's the number of veterans that are using benefits, and then there's the number of veterans that we serve. Um, we recently started offering tuition assistance for active duty personnel, we entered into a MOU with the Department of Defense just right before COVID. Which allows us to partner with all of the active duty branches and provide free tuition, well, the military pays the tuition for active duty service members. Um, so this semester, we have our first student, she is in deployed to Poland and currently taking classes at ABC. Uh, well, on through ABC, we also this year became a part of A, which is Peer Advisors for Veteran Education, we are one of fifty-eight campuses nationwide. And this is a training platform that allows our veterans to get trained to be peer mentors to other veterans. Um, it offers conferences, virtual and in person for our student workers, and that's paid for through the VA, not through the district. Um, we offer connections to community services and resources, we have several community partners, we partner with the Vet Center. Which is located in Pondale, we partner with MHA, which is Mental Health of America, VPAN, which is Veteran for Access Network. And several other communities, they are partners within the community, they come into the center weekly and offer services, housing, food, transportation, book help. Really anything that our veterans need, the community comes together to support. And of course, one of the primary functions of the center is to provide community building and a safe space for them, and it ranges from. Having a triggering event in classroom and having a place to come to be able to get help. Um, we offer currently in the BRC, we have six computer stations, a specific student printer. We have a study space that students are able to kind of move the tables around, use the whiteboard however they need. And a lounge area, and then their favorite part, we have a refrigerator with coffee, snacks, and grabbing goat meals. In the new building, we will have twelve computer stations, a completely separate study space from the lounge area. Um, I know a few of us are veteran or veteran connected and and we can be a rowdy bunch, so separating. Or creating a little bit of separation allows for studying and the networking that needs to happen, happen. Um, we will also have a veteran private patio where they'll be able to get some space and and clear up, clear their head and. Really have a place to kind of have their own little haven on campus. Um, we do work really hard on campus outreach, we have a Veterans Advisory Committee that consists of a diverse diverse group of military connected staff and veterans across campus and the community. We have a board member who serves on the advisory board as well as faculty, we have two academic deans from different disciplines. Two faculty members, two classified staff members, we have four community members. As well as different liaisons, which we train in better to be sensitive to veteran issues in different departments, so we have a veteran. Representative and financial aid, we have one in first year experience, we have one in job placement, and we're working on getting that piloted all the way across campus. We also work heavily in community outreach, I kind of went over this, so I'm not going to reiterate. But we do have also events that we attend outside of the community, so while we bring the services in, we make sure that. It's a priority to have ABC in the face of ABC and the services we provide to veterans available to the community. So we go to an event called Coffee for Vets, that's weekly on Tuesday mornings at Crazy Autos, it's kind of just a networking space and a place for us to offer. Um, announcements and things that we have coming up, so we go out and push registration, we go out and push all the things that we have going on. We also have two formal events, the Veteran and Military Ball, we just went to this Saturday, we take students and allow them to experience. Getting fancy and watching the community come together, and. Um, and to get to the data we were talking about, so we currently have four hundred and fifty-seven enrolled veterans and veterans. So that includes our veterans, but also dependents and spouses, and then we have a hundred and thirty-seven active certifications right now. Which is a little bit lower than we were pre-COVID, well, it's significantly lower than we were pre-COVID, but it's higher than last year, so we're moving in the right direction. The VA had, they have a requirement in order for students to receive their full GI bill, they have to be in at least one class on campus. They had revoked that during COVID, and so students were able to get their full GI bill while taking classes remotely. Um, and that ended in January, so we definitely saw uptick in in online, or I'm sorry, in person enrollment, and the, and once we get them. In the center and they're able to see what we have to offer, we can get them engaged and we can get them engaged across campus, we noticed that their success really does increase. Um, we also collaborate regularly, we have a quite a few staff members and faculty on campus who are veterans, and so we try to work with them and make sure their voices are heard across campus as well. And we also do receive support, we have received support from both Northrop and Lockheed, Northrop helped build the center that we have now. And Lockheed has donated money to help with different projects and stuff that we've done as well. Um, you'll see from the data, um, this is kind of, we have everybody sign in when they come into the center so that we can make sure we capture what it is that they're coming for primarily. Um, the largest chunk is VRC support, so that's when they need to speak with the certifying official, when they have questions about their benefits, when they need some connection to housing, things like that. Um, but twenty-four percent of the reason they come in is to study and do homework, and twenty-three percent is to use the computer, so. Pretty much fifty percent of the time that they're in there, they're working on their studies or bettering themselves, and then seventeen percent, they're in there for coffee and snacks. Um, one point eight percent is the MREs, which is a weekly event that we do where we order food and we have them come in and just kind of hang out. It stands for meat, relax, and eat. Um, and six point seven percent is certification, and that number significantly down because during COVID, we switched everything to an online modality. So that students were able to submit to us electronically their request for benefits and get certified that way, which has been really effective, because a lot of our veterans. They're all non-traditional students, and so a lot of them work full time and have kids and take classes at odd hours, and so we want to make sure there's no barriers to them getting the benefits that they are. Uh, finally, our goals, um, with the new center, we're going to have a lot more space, and so we really want to make sure that we're utilizing it to the full ability. So we're revamping the orientation, we're going to do a separate one, one for veterans specifically. Where we can really get into all the benefits and the things that are available for them, and then a separate one for their dependents, for one thing, dependents of veterans. Um, their parents, who are the veterans, like to have access to the information. We want to be able to host them and their parents, and we can give them all the information that they need, as well as getting them connected, because for our traditional students who are veteran connected. Sometimes their pathway to education is different, they grew up traveling and and getting moved around, and so we want to make sure that we're giving them the support that they need to be successful as well. Um, we are also partnering with the dean, Dean Dwyer over in the Learning Center to offer veteran specific tutoring. So we've gotten some feedback that some of our veterans shy away from seeking out tutoring because they don't feel like it's their peer, feel like it's someone much younger, someone they can't relate to. So we're working on getting some veterans trained to be tutors and be able to provide veteran to veteran tutoring. And of course, our huge mission is to grow tuition assistance, now we have one student and it's working, and so we want to make sure that we offer that to all of our students who are at Edwards and even Corrigan. Um, these are some of the events that we've done, so many of you always show your support and come to them, so they probably look familiar to you. We have annual events, we do nine eleven every year, we do the Memorial Day picnic, we do the Veterans Day brunch. And then a few of these other events, a couple of them were student led, and we just had our Veterans Day brunch last week. And that is, you guys have any questions for me?
One question.
Nice, um, as far as your committee, I don't notice you have a student representative on that committee, is it wrong for a student representative?
Absolutely.
Okay, and if, uh, I'm not sure, Ms. Hernandez, have we put that on our committee list? I'm not sure if I've ever seen that committee on our list, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Just very thankful that the DRC continues to grow and will grow in the future. I remember back in ninety-seven, I first got on the board, our DRC was one part-time veteran counselor, so. This is in response to unfortunately a few wars and a lot more veterans than we had back in ninety-seven, but. I'm I'm very glad to see that you're continuing to increase the opportunities for.
Okay, item thirteen point one, report of closed session action, we have no report, no action was taken, okay. Can we have a motion for the consent agenda?
So move.
So our second.
Second.
Okay, opening up discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like for fourteen point six.
Mister, Mister Reeves, you need to use your. Mister, Mister Reeves, you need to use your microphone. We don't need to pull anything. You just need to go down and discuss it.
For fourteen point six and fourteen point eight.
Yes, we don't need to pull them. We have a motion. We have a second. It's on the floor for discussion. You can discuss any of these items.
Okay.
Okay, alright.
Um, I'd like to talk about the um. Fourteen point um. Six, the travel authorization, uh, budget, uh, the vice president, uh, I, can you?
Sir, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have some questions about the travel expenses that we have, uh. I noticed it was spending uh fifty thousand dollars uh for uh. From September to November. And is this kind of the regular travel expenses? Or is this uh the result of COVID after COVID or what?
So these travel expenditures are a combination of students and and staff and faculty. Traveling to some professional development events, some equity centered events. And also um just trainings that we send our faculty and staff to and administrators. And they come from various funding streams. Some of them are restricted funds and don't impact the uh general budget. Some of them do come from general funds.
Now, uh, some of the traveling uh is from the equity funds. And where did the equity funds come from?
From the state.
From the state and they're specified for that.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, the other thing I'd like to talk about is um fourteen point uh eight. And that has to do with Measure AB. And um. I'm a little confused, Mr. Vice President, about how much money we have left on on for AB. How much money do we have remaining under Measure AB?
So we could, if if you want a budget update, then we could request that and a budget update you put on the next board agenda.
Yeah, um, right here it says three hundred and fifty million dollars. And for the fiscal twenty two to twenty three uh budget, it says a hundred and twenty eight million dollars. And then way at the other end of the chart, it says a hundred and fifteen million dollars.
That's the revised estimate remaining balance. Correct.
As of now, as of, as of now, right?
As of the date of this report.
Um, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, hearing none? Advice approved. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Passage unanimously. Moving along to action items. Item fifteen point one, approval of service agreement authorizing Schools First Plan Administration LLC to serve as the third party administrator for Antle Valley Community Colleges District. Uh, for four oh three and four fifty seven plans at no cost to the district. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
All right, yes, Mr. President, I have, uh, I have some discussion. Um, we had. Owen, about um transferring this to uh. The schools, uh, financial. And also in our packet, we got a letter from Timothy Hayes, who brought up some points about this. First school credit union. And um. There was some questions about. Some of the school districts have used this uh credit union before and they decided not to use it. The one thing that I don't understand is that they say there will be no fees to the district. But will they charge the employees? That's the question.
So I, I would like to remind you that this decision to offer this contract went through participatory processes. And the committee, the benefits committee included representatives from the unions. So the process was followed. Decision that's now being executed. With regard to, um, I wasn't copied on your email from Mr. Bowen, so I don't know what that, what's said in there. So I can't address any of that. With regard to the uh letter, um. The letter from our community constituents. Um, we, we had closed session or we had discussion previously, not in closed session. We had discussion previously and I shared with the board the correspondence that I returned. Who had written those letters addressing their concerns. So you should have a copy of that letter. If there's a specific question that's in that correspondence that I didn't address, could you please um say that so that I could help? So that I could clarify what you need to know.
Yes, uh, we, yeah, I do have a copy of your letter. Um, talking about it, you said that uh some of the employees were dissatisfied uh with the current third party administrator.
There was dissatisfaction. Um, in fact, I, before I was hired, I, I actually watched a few board meetings and saw some faculty speak to the board about their dissatisfaction with the company in Texas that we were. Has been kind of out there in the ether for a while. And more importantly, um, to employees going with the local group is something that uh ensures timely response, ensures that um that our employees are able to speak with people who can address their concerns. A third party administrator, we're basically passing their benefits through to them. So it's a benefit. The school isn't paying anything. The um, if, if Harmony, would you like to clarify? The, how this works? We, we had this conversation once before, but I want to make sure you hear it from Harmony so that, so that all of the details are straight.
So the fees of some third party administrators do.
I can't hear you with the mask. She must wear the mask, sir.
Oh, okay, but. It's way, okay, okay, okay.
So uh, third party administrators sometimes charge fees to the district or sometimes charge fees to um the TPA. So or the um four oh three B or four fifty seven company. And this instance, Schools First does not charge fees to the district or to the employee. Um, but they do have agreements with the four oh three B or four fifty seven. And the fees are paid by them. All fees and any cost. Um, four oh three B comply website. So they can go on there and see anything that their. Schools First does not have any fees onto the district or to the employee. Our current provider, TPG, does charge us and we have been paying fees. So this is, that's why there's, it would be a change.
Now, one of the concerns was that if they charged the providers, that the providers would say, you know, we're not going to pay. We're not interested.
So.
So that. Boys, the chance at some of these providers, because they know they're going to have to pay.
No, so Schools First.
No, you, you don't. Is it possible? Is it possible?
Mister Reeves, could you please let her answer the question?
No, Schools First does not go into contract with anybody who's going to pass the fees on. So they make sure that they're, part of having a TPA is to protect us from IRC. So internal revenue code, we have to be in compliance. So we have to have a third party administrator. That there goes, goes out to all these different four oh three B, four fifty seven companies and gets an agreement to be in. Terms that they would not be passing on the fee to us or to the employee.
Well, um.
Half of the employees, it's not a mandatory thing that they participate in.
And anything that would be charged, they can go off. You, and that is per exit that they have.
No, but it's not mandatory, but Schools First is going to give them the list of the people they can go to, right?
So in going into contract with Schools First as a third party administrator, we are limited for four oh three Bs and four fifty seven. Um, all of our current four oh three B providers are also provide uh for Schools First. There will be some changes for four fifty seven, um, and all of that is in the attached contract.
So we're, we're going to Schools First. Number one, why?
Well, first and foremost, there was a change in our, our contract was up with the group in Texas. So something had to be done. There was dissatisfaction of the group that we were contracted with. Even just renewing that contract would have some complications. Restructured themselves. And so, so the, the call, the, the research was done. It was put to the benefits committee and it went through our participatory process. And this was the recommendation that came forward.
Well, is it possible that we could hear from the benefits committee?
You are hearing from the benefits committee chair, sir.
Do they have a written report? A written report?
No, I don't have a written report from them. It was in a nominance, yes, for Schools.
Well, I mean, you have meeting minutes or anything?
I have agendas and some light minutes that.
Yeah, but I, I understand it. About this and they felt like some of their questions weren't addressed and they weren't able to ask them.
We've gone through this process for over two, almost three years. Um, there was some questions, the first year, they decided that they did not want to vote on it, that they wanted to wait and get more information. We honored that. We track with TCG. And then this next year, we brought in, brought more information, more research, brought the uh parties forward that we were looking at. And they answered questions, they voted and everybody agreed to move forward.
It was a unanimous vote to accept first.
Correct, sir. It was unanimous.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to call for the question.
Okay. Question is called for. We have a motion and a second. Advice? Prove. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
And one opposed. For consulting and leadership for the district's marketing office from November thirtieth, two thousand twenty two through January thirty first, two thousand twenty three. Is there a motion?
So move.
Their second. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Passage unanimously. Item fifteen point three, approval of consultant services agreement with Dixon Smart Schoolhouse LLC to assist facilities and need assessments, master planning and program management. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item fifteen point four, approval of academic policies and procedures, AP and P. Recommendation of course, listing. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point five, approval of precepting clinical affiliation agreement between Antle Valley College and. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point six, approval of master articulation agreement between Antle Valley Community College and Ohio University. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point seven, approval of two thousand twenty two, twenty three.
Aye.
Okay, item fifteen point eight, approval of agreement with Crystal Thomas Photography for Photo Booth. Services for various departments, department through the summer of two thousand twenty three. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Uh, I actually have a discussion on that.
Okay.
When I, I looked up, I know they're not in here right now, but I looked it up and it says that it was like the up to budget, but it never really specified what she would make per visit to campus. And I was just trying to see like, was there a set dollar amount? When she pulls up, she gets certain amount? If anybody know that. Or we need still equity in here to answer that.
I could find that. Sorry, it, but it does allow for some flexibility by having the up to limit. And it's, this is for um supporting the equity events that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point nine, approval agreement with Saul DV LPMNT LLC for motivational workshops and events for students through June thirty three. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, um. What are the motivational workshops all about?
They're on a variety of topics and subjects. And again, this is funded through restricted fund. It's not out of the general fund. And it's, um, it's, these kinds of events and are, are what these funds are for. To support students in their, in their learning and in their life preparation and that kind of thing.
How much is it going to cost?
I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have this extra language in front of me. I didn't run off that item. We could get that in.
Okay, advice?
Approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, item fifteen point ten, approval of consultant service. Assist with the facilitation of the EMOJA programming through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty three. Do we have a motion?
So move.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, uh, are, are these uh fifteen point ten, fifteen point eleven, are they coming out of the equity bunch?
Yes, sir, they are.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none advice?
Are approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point eleven, approval to consultant service agreement with Brandon Alexander Williams DBA Modern Day. Yeah, LLC or. Three. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay.
President Buffalo, I just want it to be known to the public that each thing that we are approving, it has been an item that we have had in our possession for over a week. The contracts include scope of services as well as the not exceed.
Other discussion? Hearing none advice?
Are approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, so we're at fifteen point twelve. Approval to extend the use of the NASPO Value Point Cooperative Agreement with Canon USA Incorporated for copiers and managed print services. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none advice?
Are approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point thirteen, approval of service agreement with Sen Learning Holding LLC DBA Cognito Solutions LLC with, for online training modules. Do we have a motion?
So one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Are approved.
Item fifteen point fourteen, approval utilize a foundation for California Community College. Item fifteen point fourteen, approval utilize a foundation for California Community Colleges master agreement with Timely Telehealth LLC for telehealth services. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mister President, um I could understand us using telehealth during the COVID crisis, but why are we continuing to use it after COVID?
Um, this is actually a pretty exciting thing that we're remaining a part of. It's a it's a chance for us to extend healthcare opportunities to all of our students. Many of our students um don't have personal physicians. And so by allowing telehealth, it's not only um it's not only physical health, but it's mental health intervention. So that they can have that around the clock.
Have we used them before?
Yes, sir. This is an 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 extension of the contract.
Any further discussion?
I have a question, Mrs. President. Is there any way we could possibly get a on-campus therapist? Such as we used to have C sun, C sub, we used to have a psychologist and the urgent, not urgent care, but medical care there. And that would be so great if we could have that back on campus for us to use.
There's great opportunity in opening the new student services building because there's going to be a small clinic for um medical attention and also mental health facilities. And so we're working towards staffing them.
Any further discussion? Hearing none advice?
Approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point fifteen, approval to utilize cooperative agreement between NelNet and Foundation for California Community Colleges for the District's Integrated Payment Solutions Needs. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice? Approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point sixteen, approval of services agreement with Foxy Engine PBC DBA Engine for a mobile English learning platform. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I do have a discussion. I read this and I was just curious on on there's only room for three hundred seats, I believe I read. Is that like first come, first served? Or how does that work out for them?
So the contract was based on estimated usage, potential usage? Sorry, just turn my mic on. It's estimated on potential usage. So Foxy Engine is for English language learners and these modules are particularly um skills-based for CTE areas. So it's like learning English for carpentry or learning English for a situation like welding or those kinds of things, right? Those are for instances. And so um the first time usage, we're trying to, you know, estimate how many students might avail themselves of this. There's always an opportunity to increase the seats if we need to.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none advice?
Approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point seventeen, approval to purchase computers from Dell Marketing LP for the Open Computer Labs and T six hundred using CMAS Contract three dash sixteen dash seventy dash zero zero twelve B with her funds. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Sir, second. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, uh Mister President, I, here we go again. Uh, we're using COVID funds for other things, other than COVID. How how? Who do we get approval to do this?
The HERF dollars come with regulations and it's not um when you think of COVID funds or the higher education emergency relief funds are broader than just the disease itself. It's to mitigate the impacts and and some of the impacts are educational and access kind of oriented. And so um we are not the only institution uh to utilize perf dollars to purchase computers and things like that to open up access for students.
Do we do we have to get federal approval when we do this?
The uh we are issued guidelines and there are compliance uh that we have to remain in compliance with that. And we work with our auditors to make sure that, we just had conversations with auditors today. We work with our auditors to know that if we if we are going to make a move using these funds, we check with our auditors and we know if we're in compliance or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any others discussion? Hearing none advice?
Approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item fifteen point eighteen, approval to amend approval uh to purchase AV equipment and labor installation from Golden Star Technology Incorporated with HERF funds. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none advice?
Approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, now we have items uh fifteen point nineteen through fifteen point three one. All regarding measure AV funds. Do we have a motion to approve those?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And we are through that portion of the agenda. Uh, information items are on your, you have that information. If you have any questions, you can check later. Uh, reports and announcements. Academic Senate, Ben Ryder.
It's my pleasure to come offer a short report to the board of trustees and President Zella and just prepare into the public. As we move into the latter half of the member, I am pleased to report on the collective work of the Senate Standing Committees as it continues. I recognize our faculty, our staff, our administrators and other partners across campus that make this work possible. Our efforts in reviewing, improving programs and course curriculum remains constant as made evidence in this evening's action of fifteen point four. Program reviews, the self-inflected process of continual improvement on the process of being completed, submitted and reviewed. In tandem with the program review and the outcome committee, work on operational outcomes is forthcoming. Honors continues to maintain increased enrollment in the local honors program that reports at current four hundred and twenty students participating and enrolled in honor sections or courses with honors offers. Distance Education Technology Committee is eating the effort to ensure accessibility compliance in our distance education forces. Faculty professional development continues to enrich the professional development lives of our faculty through its management of a strong scheduled opportunities. Tenure evaluations are ending with the recency reports being submitted with recommendations that will come to the board in the months to come. This chapter does not adequately recognize the work of task force workshop or works group, work groups, excuse me, focus groups and other groups who do so much work behind scenes. I would be remiss if I did not also include the work on accreditation that has been done and a line share of group individuals in this room and outside. Accreditation that tells our story and allows us to shape as we move forward. This shared effort illustrates the dedication and willingness of the campus community to move the work forward in educating our students forward, excuse me. Moving forward, we'll include our attention to the following. Cal gets it. Academic freedom. The development of non-credit programs to serve our most, yeah, most vulnerable populations. Ethnic Studies courses and the need focus of inclusion, diversity, equity, anti-racism and accessibility. Finally, I share the introductory words from the S triple C, President Ginny May at the most recent plenary that I attended. Quote, as faculty lead and engage in this work, centering on authentic voices and lived experiences in academic and professional matters is critical. Thus, the theme of the plenary session is centering authentic voices and lived experiences in ten plus one. As colleges emerge from a global pandemic and work to eradicate deeply rooted systematic inequities within the educational system, listen to the experiences of underrepresented faculty, under-resourced faculty and moreover, the students in the community colleges is crucially close quote. My invitation then to the board, indeed all of us, is to take more time to listen to each other. We need to thoughtfully examine, and I'll use the word even interrogate, our systems and processes so that we can lead the change. Our experiences shape who we are, but our shared experiences anchored by shared values will shape our college's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alamo Valley College Federation of Teachers, Kathy Osborne.
Good evening. Dr. Bowen couldn't be here, but he asked me to read his statements. Um, before I do that, I'd like to tell you all what a pleasure it is to work with Dr. Bowen. He is one of the smartest people I've ever met and he is incredibly dedicated and he is just such an asset to this college and I am privileged to work with him. So for Dr. Bowen, we now at this moment have an incredible opportunity for eligible adjunct faculty to receive full health benefits at parity with full-time faculty. These benefits could be made available here at Alamo Valley College as soon as spring two thousand twenty-two. AB one ninety, which was approved by the California State Legislature and signed by Governor Gavin Newsom in part rees. Existing law establishes the part-time community college faculty health insurance program, which authorizes the governing board of the community college district to provide a program of health insurance for part-time faculty and their dependents. Existing law defines part-time faculty for purposes of the program as any faculty member whose teaching assignment equals or exceeds forty percent of the cumulative equivalent of a minimum full-time teaching assignment. This bill would additionally authorize the governing board of a community college district to provide a program of health insurance for multi-district part-time faculty defined as any faculty member whose total teaching assignment or at two or more community college districts equals or exceeds forty percent of the cumulative equivalent of a minimum full-time teaching assignment. The bill would make a multi-district part-time faculty member who individually purchased health insurance benefits eligible to participate in the program and would require a community college district to reimburse a multi-district part-time faculty member for the district's proportionate share as determined of the total health insurance premium paid by the multi-district part-time faculty member as specified. On October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, Chancellor's Office provided guidance for implementing AB one ninety, which was in which included a timeline for reimbursements and clarifications for managing part-time faculty teaching at multiple districts. Regarding multi-district faculty, the guidance states a district may request reasonable documentation from a multi-district part-time faculty once per term to verify, one, the cumulative teaching assignment equal to or greater than forty percent and two, enroll plan and the amount of the premium. A formula was also provided, which calculates a district's share of the reimbursement. All of the hard work has been done. The money is available. The cost of the program for this college is zero and the Chancellor's Office has provided guidance. I don't think we have any excuses why we cannot take advantage of this opportunity as soon as possible. It would be tragic if the immediate implementation of this program were not a priority, especially given how expensive it is simply to live today and also given the incredible sacrifices our adjunct faculty make to teach our students. And what do we teach our students? We besiege them, encourage them and plead with them to take full advantage of all available opportunities. What a wonderful opportunity we have right now today. Our hope is that we will set an example for our students and demonstrate that we ta- we too take full advantage of all available opportunities when we have them and ensure that our adjunct faculty can take advantage of this incredible piece of legislation as soon as possible. This will provide much-needed relief for families, individuals, children and the community. And the relaxed concern with having this healthcare will allow our part-time faculty to focus more and more effectively on their charge, which is teaching our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Miss Ford is absent tonight, so we'll move along to confidential management supervisory administrative administrator employees, Michelle Hernandez. Okay. And Associated Student Organization, Diana Frizzoli.
Hello, everybody. Um, so for the update for ASO, um, this past ten twenty-one and through ten twenty-three of October, um, ASO, some of the senators and myself were able to go to the California Community College Student Affairs. There we were able to meet other students that have the same goals and have and want to advocate for their um stu- um, oh my goodness, they would like to advocate for students as well. Um, we did an advocacy workshop. We also were able to hear a keynote speaker named Ms. Julie Lidcock-Hames. There she explained to us that in order for us to be successful, if we want to be successful, we should do what we love and also be good at it. And then we were also able to make um contact with our, some of the California Colleges Board of Governors leaders in order for us to be able to provide more advocacy students here. Um, and then on ten twenty-six, we did have the pep rally for the ABC football team. Um, their ASO was able to provide meals for the first two hundred students. Um, we provided some ABC swag, some cupcakes and we had some music playing. Um, overall, the football team was very excited and they felt very loved. Um, and then on ten twenty-nine, we did have the homecoming game there. We also provided meals to a hundred of the, a hundred ABC students slash um locals, some cupcakes and some ABC swag. Um, unfortunately, the the team wasn't able to win, but we were still excited to be there. And right now, ASO is working on how to advocate for our athletes since our daily away um game stipends is nineteen dollars per day. We want to see how we can improve that and get a a higher rate for them. That's it. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Alamo Valley College Foundation, Diane Knippel.
Okay, what can I say? Good job, my dear. Um, this is the season of giving. So at the foundation, we have been blessed to be getting a lot of giving. We're running the Giving Tuesday campaign, which runs through the end of November. All funds go to support the Hearts and Hands pantry. And I can say today that with the matching fund from the AES Company and two other non-anonymous, I mean anonymous donors, we're already about at fifteen thousand on our twenty-five thousand dollar goal and we're only halfway through the month. So I wanted to thank AES for doing that as well and the other two that are anonymous. Um, scholarships are coming up. Uh, our scholarship season for twenty-three, twenty-four uh will open up in November twenty-ninth and run through the end of February. Lots of opportunities to um read scholarships and have a good time. Today, we have about eighty-five community members that read our scholarships. Um, so I'm really thankful for that as well. Um, and Barbara, thank you for, I I attended an Alamo Valley School Boards Association meeting and um you missed the last meeting where the vote was a positive vote um for an endowment from the School Boards Association. So the entire community of our um education group believes in the foundation and will be supporting a scholarship. So that's very great news. And then today I just um realized that we had another opportunity to get another grant from Kaiser Permanente and it's for um health services for students and that came in today as well. So that is the ninth year in a row that we've received a grant from Kaiser. So it's a great opportunity to be thankful this season. Hope you have a great holiday season and great Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Doctor Zola.
Good evening, trustees and my esteemed colleagues. Um, this last weekend has been a time of honoring and celebrating the lives of those who have served our nation in various branches of the military. On eleven eleven at eleven AM, the ABC community joined with the family of Sandra Cooley to honor her life and her service at the college. As we remember those among us who are no longer here and who have sacrificed, let us do so with grateful hearts and let us base, let us base our service in such a way that we honor them and their sacrifices. It's very moving to me as a fairly new president still, the number of notes I've had to send to the campus about um classified professionals and faculty who have passed away. Um, our our community has suffered a lot of loss. And so. And so in times of remembrance, I think it's really important for us to reach out to one another across whatever divides we might have and, and honor those who have served the college and those who have served our country. So thank you for all of the support that you have as a board have given to all of us. Antelope Valley Community College District is a complex organism and it's an organism that is continuously evolving. And like any complex organism, it responds to its primary objective while simultaneously accomplishing many complementary tasks. Our primary objective is to serve students and this community. And in order to do so, we respond to many complementary tasks such as accreditation, program review, student services programs like Puente, A Moja Trio and others, as well as work with our labor union partners to ensure that working conditions are safe and acceptable. At this point in time, Antelope Valley College is working on a tight timeline to ensure that enrollments more than reach pre-pandemic levels, but exceed them. To that end, we are working on an enrollment campaign, which I call eleven four by twenty twenty four. When we achieve and potentially surpass eleven thousand four hundred FTS, we will have returned AVCCD to pre-pandemic enrollments and it will ensure our ability to continue operations as previously funded. To reach these goals, everyone on the campus will be working on how to find a way to yes. With fresh eyes, we will be scrutinizing every process from enrollment to registration to graduation to ensure that barriers are removed from our students' paths and we are truly helping students meet their educational goals. Meanwhile, the college is diligently working on accreditation. You'll be seeing the report next month. We're working on a student housing grant application. There's continued work on measure AV building projects and by the way, the daily business of teaching, serving students and college operations. Above all, we continue to serve students and be kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee, Corey.
Yes, thank you. Um, first, I want to just, for the people, for all of our people that had passed away at our school and for the veterans, I would like to just take a brief moment of silence. All right, so I am astounded by our school. What we are doing at this college, we are leading in a lot of policies and a lot of, uh, basic needs at our school and I'm really proud to be here. And I'm, uh, just keep advocating for students to be more involved, to get more active in governance and, uh, campus committees. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, Mr. Adams.
I was privileged to attend the homecoming game and more particularly the dedication of the Frank Odell Memorial Press Box. Uh, I know he's smiling down on the field every time a team digs the field, whether it's soccer or football. Um, and I understand the brass plaque that's going to go on the building is, uh, going to be up there pretty shortly. So I'm, uh, I was, I was very happy to be there for, for that, that moment for Frank. Uh, I attended the Classified Craft Fair and I appreciate the classified staff always putting that on. It, it gives scholarships out to needy students and, uh, my wife always thanks me for going there and buying jewelry. Um, I want to congratulate the ABC Women's Soccer Team on defeated in conference and, uh, first place. And Nancy Jo Hatfield, who was here earlier, getting a, a, a recommendation and commendation for being on the Oversight Committee. Those of us who know Nancy Jo from way back was at all the basketball games, women's and men's and volleyball games and, uh, was a particular favorite of not only our own teams, but the visiting teams all loved her as well. The referees loved her. Everyone would come up before the game and during the game, she always had gum to give out. And every, everybody at the game knew that she had gum to give out. So I think she must have gone through three or four packs of every game because everyone would come up and ask for a stick of gum. But, uh, she was an institution, uh, as a scorekeeper at those games and, and we certainly miss her at those. Um, one final thing. Uh, my understanding is the ABC Benefits Committee is a participatory governance committee. Um, and therefore if they make a unanimous recommendation to the board and the board decided not to accept that recommendation, that would be a significant accreditation issue. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Um, I want to thank the Student Affairs Office for the great brunch they had for the veterans. Um, and also, uh, thank the Veterans Office for the attendees to the Veterans Ball last weekend. Uh, we had two people at our table that won the, the raffle. And one of them was our college president. Uh, also, I want to thank, I want to commend and congratulate the women's, uh, Marauders Women's Soccer Team for their great achievement. And finally, to everybody, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Sure.
I would like to wish everyone a happy, healthy Thanksgiving. Okay, um, Diane, I want to, uh, say congratulations. I'm very happy that the Alamo Valley School Board uh, made that decision. I would have been there, but my son had two stents put in Wednesday night and so Oprah, I spent all day Thursday through Sunday with him. I was, uh, yes, as I should, I suppose. Uh, but I'm very happy for that outcome. Um, I also want to, uh, congratulate all the essay winners. Um, just to take the initiative and do that extra work and succeed at that level. Uh, I wished I would have had the chance to read their essays because it sounds like they were pretty, um, remarkable. And e, even though our veteran, uh, registration or student count is a little bit down from previous years, I'm still very excited that we have four hundred fifty-seven veterans in our community attending uh, Antelope Valley College. Um, it's, um, it's very, very exciting to hear that number. At my, at my high school, I have a cadet corps and at my middle school, I have a cadet corps and it's amazing to see young people who strive to, for, to, uh, serve their community in one way. Ultimately, uh, many of them will be in the military service. Um, and I want to also, um, say it's an honor and a privilege to be able to sit here hopefully for another four years and, uh, with, uh, everyone on this board. So, um, I thank the community. No one ran against me, but I'm thankful, I thank them for not uh, but for giving me the opportunity to still be here. And I too want to wish, uh, everyone who, uh, completes the thread of Alamo Valley Community College a wonderful Thanksgiving. I, I, I just in listening, I'm, I'm just amazed at all the great work everyone does and all the departments here. So, um, let's keep up the good work and, uh, see you back in December.
Thank you. Well, I think it's obvious that anything that John Vento touches usually turns out incredibly well. And this year, no different. He has a great job with the students, great job in those programs. Uh, congratulations to ABC's Women's Soccer Team for the championship. I love the quote from our president of the team. I don't remember exactly how that goes, but they never lose, right? Okay. So, um, the homecoming was a, was a nice affair and I agree with Mike. Um, Nancy Jo is a legend and she is just somebody that you're always going to remember. There's just no one like Nancy Jo. So, and also, I don't know if some of you are getting out, but the trees are changing. There's some amazing colored trees on campus and that's our version of New Hampshire, I guess. So without, uh, any other discussion, uh, we have no, uh, closed session. We will, um, reconvene the next meeting Friday, December ninth and it's going to be at nine AM in here and that's nine AM, okay? And we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
It's going to be in the Performing Arts Center.
It'll be in here. Okay. I, I've been twisted on this thing five times now. So I, I do have it right, right here. It's here. Okay. Okay. Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you.